I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise with lots of allegiance and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And happy new year, everybody.
Happy new year.
So we have roll call?
Commissioner Ann Sorgi.
Here.
Commissioner Rushton.
Present.
Chairman Bonnet.
Here.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Sudas Little.
Here.
Commissioner Rettenbach.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment. Comment?
Good morning. Gwynn Algeier, Cleveland. Welcome to 2020 and thank you for all of your service. I hope that we will address, there is greater technology to test our water to make sure that the water that we are drinking and swimming in and our grandchildren and children are swimming in is clean. There are breakthroughs in technology. I hope that our county will be on the forefront of protecting the water that we drink in 2020 because nothing's more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And will be proactive.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. additions or deletions?
Will be approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We now have an agenda. So then that brings, yes, Mr. Russell. First action for vice chair?
At this time, I would like to nominate Melinda Lautner as vice chair for a one-year term.
Commissioner Rettenbach.
I move to nominate Tony Ansorgi as vice chair.
Does not want the position.
Pardon me?
He's shaking his head no.
I move to nominate Peachy Rittenbach.
Support?
I move to nominate Deb Rushton.
Support?
Support.
All right, so we'll have to take these in order of the nomination once we have an elected one. Yes.
I'm sorry, I was trying to catch up here. On the nomination, Commissioner Wesley, you nominated Commissioner Rushton and Sudas Little. Thank you.
Okay, so the first one would be Commissioner Lautner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes four to three and we have a vice chair.
Thank you.
Thank God because I didn't want it.
No?
I know, I was gonna vote.
Wessel, Rettenbach, and Sudas Little. Thank you. So, yes.
I move to make the nomination of the election of the chair unanimous.
I'll support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Commissioner Russell.
Mr. Chair, I have a general question in regards to the rules of order and procedure. I'm questioning whether this exercise is necessary today. Historically, we have had rules that we establish, but I have found, especially this last year, our rules have been violated. And so my question, and maybe Mr. Janet can also weigh in on this, is when it comes to board rules, is this policy? Is this something that we can change at an individual commissioner's whim? On August 6th, if you read on page 14, number six, I believe it is, it specifically states that all resolutions and ordinances come before an executive board. That didn't happen on a very important issue. And so today I question whether these rules really have any merit for this board.
Well, if you are, if you're on spite, yes, you do need to have rules. They can be modified at any time. Any board member can challenge the rule and then the chairman makes a decision on whether it's valid or not. Anyone can disagree with the chairman, ask for a vote at that point. And that's by your rules.
Commissioner Anderson.
We waive board rules almost every month.
Correct.
You know, spending or picking a vendor or whatever, you know, we do that on a regular basis. So, I'm, you know, I don't know what else we can do.
Well, however, at that particular meeting, our board rules were not set aside.
Well, that should have been brought up at that point.
Yeah.
So, the question is, what if it's not?
Yeah. What happens if it's not? What's the recourse?
Then where we have board rules, is that what you're saying? Hey, if we do it properly, they're in place? If we don't do it properly, they're in place but we're not using them properly?
Commissioner Anderson.
My understanding is they must be challenged at the time that the supposed violation occurs. And if so, then we get a ruling and then we vote to either agree or disagree with the chair. That didn't happen, but that is a part of our rules. But I don't think we go back in history and look for all of the violations. It's our responsibility as commissioners at the time that there's a supposed violation to address it.
Where is that? Where is the challenge?
Were you through, Commissioner Wessel?
I wanted to look at that.
Commissioner Lautner.
Okay, is that?
What?
Where is the challenge? Because I didn't see a challenge.
There was no challenge.
So, it isn't in here? So, we go back.
No, the challenge is in your vote.
It's in our minutes. I mean, of that meeting, there would be no challenge. What she's talking about on page 14 is it says that every resolution should go to the executive board. And I guess my ruling on that would be, we had a four to three vote, so that the millage resolution was passed and we ignored our rules.
Okay.
And so it still holds true and it's, you know, even though it's a violation of our rules and policies, we're not going to change the vote of the people or the vote of the commissioners. And I do, you know, and, but we just need to be aware then, I would say, that we do, should be following our procedures and we try to do that with waiving the, you know, the bid policy and different things. So, but they are our rules and if we violate them, we're just violating our old rules. It's not a law that we can give prostitutes or anything else, you know? It's just a slap on the hands and, you know, and we should try to do that. You know, so I, yeah. Commissioner Anderson.
And any commissioner can raise as a point of order at any meeting, you know, if it occurs, you know, to somebody to point it out because we can address it at that point, you know, really. So, don't, you know, any commissioner has that ability to raise that as a point of order at any point in time, you know, during a meeting, so.
Right. Commissioner Ritten.
It is part of our due diligence as commissioners to be able to do that at any time. I mean, that's, you know, that's our, part of our board rules, you know?
It's a.
Are you through?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
And I, and I had another question regarding procedure and this revolves around the election that we just had. When you nominate someone, and maybe Michelle needs to answer this, does it have to be seconded? Aren't nominations just made and then you vote?
It's done both ways, so I don't know what the legal answer is.
Actually, we talked about that with Mr. Cole several years ago when there was, I think, three people nominated for chairman, I believe, at that time.
Uh huh.
And I believe he did say, you can do one nomination at a time, it has to be seconded and you can vote, or you can nominate in theory six different people, have it seconded and have it voted.
It does have to be seconded?
Yes. As I remember that discussion.
Okay.
I can confirm that, but that's, I'm going off my memory. That any request or motion, even nomination, has to be seconded.
I thought it was, it didn't have to be seconded.
But I can clarify.
Yeah, you should.
I said, I'm going from memory here.
Yeah.
Because I thought that was a question that was brought up maybe three, four years ago.
Right.
Let me get a clarification on that.
Yeah, because I believe that.
And you could be right.
It doesn't have to be seconded on a nomination.
I know we had to call Mr. Cole because there were some questions about that last night.
Commissioner Sudas Little.
With regards to our rules, the one thing that I'd like us to discuss a bit is, I know we have a precedence of speaking in order, you know, and no commissioner is supposed to speak again until everyone has had their opportunity and the limit is five minutes. I'm wondering if it makes sense, because we all get passionate on certain issues, on the second time around that people want to speak and succeeding times, that we limit it to three minutes instead of five minutes. Our meetings can get really long and I know, you know, most of us, yes, passionate about particular issues. So, it would be good to have healthy discussion and rebuttal, but I'm wondering if it makes sense, instead of five minutes every time a person speaks after they've spoken the first time, to limit the second and succeeding times to three minutes.
I didn't know that there was any limit. I don't read that anymore.
Yeah, it's in there. It says five minutes.
What page is that on?
Oh, yeah, I've got a highlight.
I really don't know if any commissioners that speak more are passionate about time, maybe speaks at a time.
Page 12.
And where, are you talking about? Dean two? Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Yeah. It's C.
Okay.
It's item C.
So, how did you want to, do you want to change it, anything, or just be aware of it, or you want to say the second time around, they can only go three minutes?
Second time and succeeding, you know, comments or rebuttals limited to three minutes.
I, right. Commissioner Lautner.
I really can't imagine why we would want to limit our discussion at this board. Someone down the line just spoke about due diligence and our due diligence is to make sure that everything is brought out and stated that needs to be stated. So, sometimes when you speak, especially just to a motion, which is your first time to speak, you're speaking only about the motion itself. Subsequently, someone can bring up an issue that needs to be readdressed and maybe more than one point that needs to be readdressed. So, why we would limit our voices to three minutes, I don't know. I certainly wouldn't support limiting it. Meetings go long for a number of reasons. There's other places. We can change the agenda if we really needed to shorten our meetings. There again, we are doing the county's business, so I, I've never really been concerned about shortening our meetings, at least not for us. It's kind of painful for those who must sit through them as far as staff and newspaper goes, but if that's what it takes to do the business, we do the business, but I'm not going to support limiting our voices. And I think we rarely go over the five or three, I would guess.
Commissioner Russell.
It was my understanding that the five minutes was given to the sponsor of the motion and the floor then is opened up to other commissioners. And to me, historically, what we have done has allowed the chair to rein in this board, which I think he does a pretty good job. Speaking for myself, I'm, I'm one of the worst defenders. I do like the idea that we have the opportunity to have a robust conversation about issues that come before this board. Our constituents expect it. They expect us to fully discuss, seek the information so that we can make a responsible decision. So, limiting the discussion, I would, I would also not support.
Well, I thank you for your input. My thought was not to limit our debate. I think that's healthy and important also. It's just that I think many times, once we've made a point, a tendency is, human nature is to repeat what's already been said. So, if this is the board's desire, I have no problem with it. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion to see where people were on it. Thank you.
Commissioner Wessel.
I'd like us to talk about the possibility of moving public comment before the communications, proclamations, and presentations. I think sometimes people come, start in the meeting to make a public comment and then they need to go to work or they need to do something and sometimes chat gets lengthy for, or the other presentations and people coming to make a nine o'clock public comment are here at 10:30. And I would, I would favor just saying, we'll do public comment at the beginning of the meeting and then if you want to make public comment, you can, you can stay or you can
Commissioner Lautner.
I think it's very important to leave public comment after approval of agenda because most of that public comment is going to be based on our agenda. So, I think the public needs to be, it needs to know what will be action that day, what we will vote on or act on, or what we take of the agenda that day. So, I would like to see it stay, remain after the agenda. Now, the, as far as the communications, proclamations, those can get long, but we've also gotten a lot of feedback from the public who sat through those and have said that they have learned so much. That's their choice to do so. This board's been lenient enough to read public comments into the record too, if a person cannot stay. So, either way.
Commissioner Ritten.
Well, if we moved the communications, proclamations, and presentations after the approval of the agenda and moved the public comment, you know, what I'm trying to say is move the communications, proclamations, and presentations after public comment and leave the rest of it in the order that it is. That way, those they wanted to stay for what they learned, they could, but they would have the ability to speak and leave before, you know, we've gotten into some rather lengthy presentations.
Commissioner Sudas.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion too, to simply shift the communications, proclamations until after public comment, but approval of the agenda before public comment.
Okay, so just for clarification, that would be?
You're shifting?
The call to order.
Right.
Pledge of allegiance, roll call, approval of agenda and late additions, public comment, and then communications, proclamation, and presentation.
Correct. Correct. That makes sense.
Commissioner Lautner.
We have commissioner comments after public comment at the end of our meeting. Do we want to move commissioner comments up below public comments at the beginning of the meeting? Because that's where most of our public comment comes in and quite often, there's questions, the public will ask a question. We would have the ability to very shortly answer those questions at that time.
I think that might be a valid point, but we need to really address the first one first, you know, then we can address that, if you don't mind, you know, or do you want to switch it all, try to switch everything all at once?
I would.
I would just do one at a time, if you would.
Well, I can support moving it if we, if we put a commissioner comment after a public comment, then.
At the top or at the end?
Right after public, right after public comment, just like down below. So, it would be, so, you know, as you said, you just, we're really just moving communications down, switching it, and just add a commissioner comment after public comment.
If, if we handle it one at a time, then we can discuss whether we're in favor of moving commissioner comment up.
Right. I know what you're saying, but we'll wait, let's do this other one, see if we're going to do it first, you know? And so, so I'm saying that, see, to me, a lot of times, we may have the sheriff here, we may have, you know, somebody, and if we wait for them, especially if it's a busy, I mean, I've seen public comment go for an hour, you know, 45 minutes sometimes. Now, do we want the sheriff and the conservation of the district and all of them to sit and wait through that before we let them give their presentation? And it's, it's every division and that, I think that's why we do it first. I mean, I'm okay if you want to move it, but I think we'll have those people sitting, you know, for a long time, or if we're giving an award to Mr. Ansorgi or to whoever, I mean, how long do they wait after the public comment?
We're paying them.
So, yeah, I, you know, are we going to do this for the public or for, for this commission, you know? I don't know. I mean, I have a hard time, I guess I wouldn't support changing it because I see, you know, whether the, constantly we're moving someone up to get them ahead of time because they have to go somewhere. And, you know, so I guess I wouldn't support moving any of those things.
This was good discussion and I didn't think of that and I'm willing to pull, pull my suggestion off, along with the encouragement that we keep those proclamations and reports as concise as we can.
Right. I think that would be a better idea, that we make chat, make sure that they know it's 15 minutes and they keep it. All right? We'll make sure we keep the comments by commissioners, so. And really, to address what Commissioner Sudas Little said, I really don't time people, but if anyone wants to comment and someone has already commented before, I try to get them, I move them ahead. Someone said once or twice and someone who hasn't spoke raised their hand, I'll call on them first, you know, if I notice it. Because I think that's only fair to give them the chance rather than someone going a second or third time. But, but I have never timed it and I don't know that any of us have gone as long as some of the public people when we give our comments. So, I mean, it has happened, I'm sure, but, but not, not that often, I don't think. Right. And then I do try to limit that, but, but I don't know if, if you want me to start timing it, I think that would be quite a distraction for me. I have a hard enough time with this, so.
No, we make chat do it.
Okay. But I really don't want to start timing commissioners when they're speaking, you know, but I appreciate your comment and I will try to be more aware of it. Okay, so, so now Commissioner Lautner, do you want to address moving?
No, I'm for not moving it at all. If you change nothing, that's okay. Thank you.
All right. So, is, is, was any other comments about the agenda?
The agenda?
Well, not our, our meeting agenda. That's what we were talking about, you know? Yes.
I would like to have a very short conversation about commissioner assignments to boards and commissions. When we had our, just recently, we went through the citizen appointments and we have a policy of only allowing a citizen to participate on a particular board for a certain length of time because we want a variety of input from people and, you know, let different people have opportunities to do that. Why would we not do the same thing for ourselves? Why would we not say, okay, if you've been on this board for whatever period of time, pick a period, that now it's someplace, somebody else's turn to be appointed to that board? I'm opening that up. I think, you know, if it's good for the public, why isn't it good for us?
Historically, what the Board of Commissioners have done is allowed the commissioners to inform the chair what boards they would like to be on. Okay. Any commissioner, any first of the year can request a board and that decision is left up to the chair. I like that process. I think, and most of us have been on our boards for a lot of years, and some of those boards require a little bit more information, you might say, or a learning curve. And when you start switching up these boards, I think those committees, it's a burden to those committees because now I have to retrain or bring them up to speed and a year, two years on a board, I don't find sometimes is enough time to really grasp what's going on in the agency. If there's a board you want to be on, I would suggest that you just put a request in.
Can I have?
Oh, there you go.
Go ahead.
You know, all of those arguments could be said, we could make those same arguments for the citizen appointments. So, should we change that policy to reflect that same procedure?
Our citizens fill out a form and they tell us what boards they prefer to be on. We don't consider them for any board that they don't ask to be on and that's basically what we do.
What I was referring to is should we be limiting the time limit that they can be appoint, assigned to a board? You know, all, all the reasons that you stated, and, you know, and, you know, I don't disagree with you that there is valid reasons why there might be, you might take a while to be, get up to speed or have a certain level of knowledge, you know, that could also apply to a citizen appointment to a board.
When, at our boards and commissions, a lot of times, we waive that requirement for specific reasons. There's seven of us, there's a whole lot more citizens out there, so I think that's why we put a limit on them, you know? And if we have a person who is requested by the committee to have them reappointed, even though their time is up, we take that into consideration and we'll reappoint that same person.
And we have done that.
And we've done that, exactly. We've got people that have been in on boards year after year after year after year. One, because we can't find.
Somebody else.
Yeah, somebody else. So, it's different, I think, with the commissioners than it is with the public. I still think we should have a time limit, we have the ability to waive that and keep that person there, so it's a little bit more flexible depending on the situation. That's my two cents. I had my five minutes. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ritten.
Okay, start the clock. I see both sides to the story. I mean, I think that there is a value to the continuing service on a committee, you know, for institutional continuation and that that's helpful. But I also see Commissioner Ansorgi's point about aren't some fresh ideas and aren't some, you know, new changes appropriated from time to time? So, I don't know, I think that the way it's set up now, if you made an appointment to a board and the board as a whole didn't agree with that, we could nominate another person to fill that.
True.
To fill that board or?
Okay.
Well, I just want to have a discussion because we're doing two different things.
I think, I think you have a valid point because I know there have been boards that I've wanted to get on, that someone's on it and they don't want to leave and, you know, so, as commissioner. But that, we keep them there because they're there and, and so, there's, it works both ways, but I think the pub, let the public decide, they vote us out. ways, but I, I think the pub, let the public decide, if they vote us out, well, then those become available, you know?
There you go. I'm just going to raise that point. Citizens' questions are longer than ours.
Otherwise, I, I think keeping the continuity really works, especially, like I was on community mental health, and that's a tough one to try to learn how to do, and, and to, you know, and if you go there, it takes two years just to understand even what they're talking about. So, you know, it could be that way, I don't know about beta or all of that, so.
Thank you for allowing the discussion.
Fine. I, I do think we need to look at the video renewal, because it was only for one year trial, so we should really decide if we want to continue that. I think it's been a success. You know, I was opposed to it, so I have to admit that it's working out, I've looked at it myself, and it works, and I don't know how many people listened to it before, but I know quite a few did, but I think they use it, so yes. Commissioner Reddick.
I am in favor of continuing also. I want to apologize for the one time that I did call in. I've had my phone disconnected, and there will no longer be that type of interruption coming from a meeting that I may miss because of being out of town. I would rather have it be that you're allowed to miss two meetings, rather than a regular and an exec, or even three meetings, I mean, this is 2020, and we need to get with the electronic situation. It's kind of the way of the world, and I, I just feel that it's helpful to be able to participate electronically, but I'd rather not have it, you know, one exec and one regular, because I missed this last regular, I would have been happy to participate if that had been available.
I just need a clarification. Are we talking about commissioner attendance by a video, or are we talking about videotaping the meetings?
Commissioners attendance, that was part of your board rules.
That's, I'm sorry.
The meeting to videotape, that was a regular meeting, so that decision is.
It's fine.
But last year, just as you remember, Commissioner Westall made a motion to try for one year.
And that's why I was, wanted to make sure I clarify what we're talking about.
It's on page thirteen.
Item F. Yes.
Well, I have certainly appreciated it for my absence in March, and I think it can only get easier to do as we get more bandwidth, and certainly, certainly, I remember, two years ago, I flew back for a board meeting, it took me three days of travel, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the only agenda item on the board meeting was the price of the boots on the Construction Codes Authority. It was a long trip to make that vote.
You know what I say about that? So I appreciate if we support it, it helps me personally. Commissioner Lotner.
My, my position hasn't really changed at all. I appreciate that it's helpful for those who can vacation and still do their elected duty of voting on this board, but they, it is distracting, it's very distracting. I sat down here the last times that was going on, I don't know if it'd be different down here or not, but I just found it very distracting, but I, I don't vacation, I never get to vacation, so if I am out of town or miss a meeting, it's because I'm working, and I can't leave work to attend a video meeting here. It isn't going to work for me personally. I appreciate it works for some, it's just not going to work for me.
When you get, when you get older and get to take a vacation.
I'll look forward to that.
Commissioner Soodas Little.
I think it has worked well also, and would certainly support continuing it as, adding it on an ongoing basis to our rules. Like Commissioner Lotner, we don't seem to take many vacations, but perhaps if we do at some point, it would be very nice, but for those who do need to be away, whether it's vacation or some other reason, I think it's an important option to have, and it keeps everybody dialoguing on the issues.
Commissioner Rush.
So participa- participation, thank you, is contingent upon this onsite quorum.
Right.
So that means we can have up to three commissioners at one meeting.
On video.
On video, right. I, I think that's a problem. I don't know if, one, we're set up.
Yes.
We can do three different screens in here?
No, they're, with the way the polycom works, we have one system here, remotely, the, up to three people could have their iPads, and it would be three screens showing us. The technology's in there.
One screen, but three, a split screen?
They'd be smaller screens, yes.
Some of us look better on the small screen.
I could probably support that now that I know that.
Commissioner Reddick.
I mean, vacation, or the possibility that you have a loved one that's ill and you need to get out of town, or your daughter's expecting a baby, or something like that, you know, there may be other reasons than vacation to miss a meeting. It only happens three times last year, and I think that the likelihood of having it happen with three commissioners in one meeting is unlikely, but I, I am in favor of continuing with the rule, and as I say, I'd like it to just be stated as two meetings, rather than separated exec and regular.
Commissioner Ansari. What do we need to do? Well, I, I would say we just have, we need a motion to continue it.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, and, you know, someone to second it.
What exactly is the?
Put your motion.
Resign the motion, please.
Let me pull up the rule as it's written.
It's on page thirteen, I don't count.
Offsite, number F.
好吗?
Number F.
You want to do two video remotes?
Right now, the policy is one executive board meeting and one regular meeting, so you think.
Just two meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just want that changed to two meetings.
I would support.
So, and my motion will be that the offsite participation in board meetings is limited to two meetings per year for each individual commissioner.
So it'd be fourteen total, maximum, right?
Yeah, two per commissioner.
Two, ringtone, Tony.
So, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. So that's, we're just doing, changing it from executive, regular, to just two, two meetings? It could be two executive or two regular.
Right.
Or a special meeting.
So offsite participation in board meetings is limited to two board meetings per year for each individual commissioner.
Right.
Two meetings, I think, rather than board, because, and I think it sounds like regular meetings if you just do board.
Well, but, would, okay, I mean, you wouldn't want us, I guess it would, committing at the whole, it wouldn't, that's a meeting, anything would be a meeting that.
Yeah.
Could be part of the record, I guess.
Special meeting.
Yeah. All right, everybody understands? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes four to three. Who was preferred? Yeah. All right, so, I don't know, is there any other things on order and/or procedure?
Well, this kind of links together with the next item, but if you look at page five, it says the schedule for next, for this year, and it's linked to item number three, the November schedule actually should be the second Tuesday. Veterans Day is November eleventh, which is a Wednesday. If you look at page five, it says the second Wednesday of November at nine o'clock. I don't know if that, why you have that in there? Because Veterans Day is Wednesday, November eleventh, so there's no reason we can't meet on Tuesday, November tenth.
I think, let me see.
I don't know where you have.
On page five of the rules.
Item twenty-three.
Number twenty-two is the executive meeting, second Wednesday of November.
Mine says first Tuesday of November.
Okay, my copy says.
Mine says second Tuesday of November.
Okay, do you have an older copy here?
Mine says first Tuesday.
Mine says first Tuesday.
Mine says, but what, wouldn't it be the second Tuesday?
Well, yeah, the, the package that I have, anyway, says second Wednesday.
For line twenty-two.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, is, is this something?
Are you talking November or December?
No, mine says November.
Okay.
Unless I have an older copy that you made, Laurel?
Okay, eleven, eleven calls on a Wednesday.
Second Tuesday.
What's that?
It should be second Tuesday.
Yes, but this copy that I have says.
First.
No, it says second Wednesday of November, day following Veterans Day.
So it should say.
That's not what.
I must have an older copy that you.
So, two corrections, we need to get line seven to say regular board commissioner meeting, third Tuesday of March, and then line twenty-two, it should state executive board commissioners meeting, second Tuesday of November. So two changes.
Right.
Okay, I must have an old copy of both of that, and on page eighteen, where it says draft meetings, that says the November meeting will be on Wednesday, November.
Eleven.
Yeah, it should be Tuesday.
November tenth, okay. So I must have an old copy of the draft.
Is this the one that's, oh, doesn't have it.
All right, I must just get it.
My copy says the first Tuesday of November, which is the third.
Yeah, she said change that to the second.
It should be the second.
Okay, so, so November meeting will be the second Tuesday as always, right?
We have it this year on a Wednesday.
The tenth of November.
Tenth of November, right?
Yes.
Right.
Are we going to get a printed copy of the, of the correct?
Everything's approved, everything will be.
Okay.
And if it isn't, they'll correct it again.
Okay.
We'll make sure.
The only one that has to be the first Tuesday is October.
Is October.
Is October.
Right.
So we've got those two corrections to line seven and to line twenty-two.
And, and the regular board meeting can't be any later than what day in October?
I think, I want to say it's the fourteenth.
Okay.
So October would be the sixth, and then the regular meeting would be the thirteenth, the week after.
Yep. There is another, when you get to that meeting schedule, it's, it's going to be farther on in your packet. That's a separate motion outside of these rules.
Yeah, that's, I have it on page eighteen.
Yeah.
The thirty-first?
What's that? Yeah, it has one in there for the thirty-first, too.
Do you still want to do it on the thirty-first?
Missed the weekend, I think we should do it on the thirtieth.
Somebody's young enough to be concerned about New Year's Eve.
We'll get to that, we'll get to page eighteen, and that's not part of the.
Okay. Yeah, it, well, yeah, that probably is hard, but I'd say the year to pack up, there was a ton of amendments this year. So, okay, so we'll look at that down the road.
So do, do we have to have an approval of the rules and orders and procedures? Could we?
Well, do you want to change that eighteenth now, then?
That's.
Because it's in there?
We'll change the.
That's number three.
Oh, okay, so we can just do that.
Well, I think the only changes is the attendance by polycom.
Right. So we'll make that change to our device copy.
I make an motion to approve the board rules of order if they want amendment regarding participation or electronic.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So now, then I guess we're looking at the approval of the 2020 meeting schedule, which is on page eighteen.
Move to approve as presented with the change on those two lines.
Okay, do we have a second? Because we don't want that. Would you withdraw that, or?
I will.
Okay. All right, let's have, let's have a discussion of it first, because I think they want to change it to December thirtieth as our final day, and I don't know that there was any other, if you look on page eighteen, was there any other thing, anything else?
I think those are correct.
Yeah.
I have.
Okay, yes.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm just wondering why we're putting the twelve thirty-one date in there for a special session. I think it would be a lot easier to just, at that time, let the clerk tell us, you know, what her best day is according to her schedule.
Small squall warning.
Small squall warning.
We can do it that way, too.
We can get your signature on it.
Yeah, you're right, there's no reason to.
Yeah, I, I just think that, I think we're causing undue stress on the clerk's office by doing this. If she wants it earlier, then make it earlier, than the thirtieth.
We just do a special notes, like next December.
Which we do anyway.
We just want to keep it in your radar that you know it's coming.
Yeah, that's the thing, it's just.
It's mainly to just keep it focused, so that we know we can get four, be here and get those bills paid and those budgets and that.
Yes.
So remove that line.
Commissioner West.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion now. I hold it, we approve the schedule as presented with the elimination of the twelve thirty-one meeting, and making sure that we have the right week for the November meeting, and we do on here. So that's my motion.
Support.
Commissioner Ansari.
We don't have dates on there for the organizational meeting in next, you know, year from now, do we need to fill that in?
Mine says one nine.
One five.
On eighteen, it says eighteen-one, the meeting date.
Okay.
There is a minor or two, where it says regular meeting, January nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. It says the deadline date is January first, twenty, that should be twenty-one.
Mine says January seventh.
Yeah, but it says twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty-one, oh.
At least it might have those.
Yeah, one twelve twenty-one.
Did you have something? Commissioner Rush, do you?
Yeah, it's right in the left. I was looking at the year twenty twenty-one, so the dates didn't work, but I'm good.
Commissioner Reddick.
I, I've been having trouble in this meeting also following along, because I never received any packet of information for the organizational meeting. So I've been referring to my rules of order on the Rivermount County Board Cake, you know, our website page. I also didn't receive the weekly update.
Well, there wasn't a weekly update over the holidays.
Okay, I didn't.
But the organizational packages did come out.
I haven't received one for the last three weeks, and I know one of those weeks you were out of town.
There wasn't, yeah.
Like the week prior to your leaving town, and then this past week when you were here, I didn't receive it. So I'm having an email issue, and if you could forward me the packet at this time, I could follow along.
And I'll check with Lauren to see what's going on.
Yeah, the packet was sent out last week.
Yeah.
Okay, I did not receive it.
So we'll have to check with Lauren to see what's going on. Why don't we go make her a packet right now?
So December thirteenth was the last, we had an update, December thirteenth. You didn't get that one.
Tony's forwarding, Tony's forwarding you to the packet.
Okay, I'll see if I get it.
It's on its way. If that ever happens, let, you know, anyone, let us know, so you can get it right at the beginning.
But you don't know what you don't know.
That's true.
That's a problem.
Well, if you do know.
Okay, I just got it from Tony, thank you.
So we have a motion, did we have a second? I didn't have a second.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's right, yeah. So everyone understands as for our meeting schedule? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. So then we have the, the regular updates, continuation of the monthly ones, we're just going to, chat's going to make sure they're fifteen minutes.
I'll do my best.
Could we narrow it to ten, and then they go fifteen?
Well, it depends how many questions commissioners ask also.
I'd like to let you know that when I sent out the email to everyone, I would say please limit to no more than ten, thinking that they may go over fifteen, but I'm limiting it now to just two per session, if that helps.
It does help.
I've been trying to limit them, but.
But there's three on the first one.
The sheriff is, if you look at your draft agenda, the sheriff has been gone, so he's not actually going to be next week.
All right.
You'll see all those names, but I try to break it down between the executive and the regular.
Well, we, we were teasing, but I find the presentations helpful, and we, I think, I think we, we appreciate them.
All right, so that brings us to number five. I didn't, I mean, I plan on them all staying the same, unless someone has something to say. Commissioner. Commissioner.
I don't know how to say this, other than, you know, I do think that we need to look at some of the boards, and, you know, I made a request last year, I made it again this year, I didn't get a sign, and that's your prerogative, I understand that, but, you know, if there can be some feedback,
you know, is it just because that's the way you want it, or is there a reason?
You know, because, you know, in this case, you know, I did talk with the person that currently holding the seat, and, you know, they said that they would be willing to give it up, and it's like, okay, what's, you know, is there a different, is there another reason that I didn't get an assignment? You know, so it's difficult for me to look at this and understand exactly what's going on.
Well, you know, I guess I looked at it, everybody, my understanding was everybody was satisfied with what they're doing, they were willing to, but they didn't really, they didn't mind being there, so I didn't see that, you know, that I needed to change it, yes. That's all my thinking was, it wasn't any trying to slight somebody or doing anything that, you know, but I didn't see anybody saying, I want to get off of this one. You know, they were willing to, but they didn't really want to. It was my understanding. Yes.
I agree with what Commissioner Anzorgi said. I think, I should have made some comments when we were talking about this before. I think it is important to have a rotation on commissioners, and I do think that when you request something twice and you still don't have it, that says a lot. I think it's important, you know, if you look through who served how many times on the different boards and commission, you know, yes, there is something to be said for longevity, but there's an awful lot more to be said for new ideas and positive thinking. And I know that you have the right to make appointments, but it's with approval of the board of commissioners. So I'd like to make a motion now that we go through and approve these, and I'd like to do it by board and commission. That's my motion.
Okay. Well, you're asking for a division of the question, I don't...
I'm asking for a division of the question.
That's not a motion, anybody can request that.
What I'm really asking is that we approve these formally, which we've not really done before. We just kind of nodded, but I think what I'd like to do is have a formal approval of the slate. To begin with.
Okay.
Is that okay, a support, or am I okay?
Commissioner Law?
I'm the commissioner that Tony spoke with, he has an interest in the board of health, which I sit on. And I didn't ask for any change of my boards, because I am happy with the boards that I do sit on. But when we spoke, I said there's a potential of a trade, or a switch, or something along that line. And there are two board of health seats. So there is that. My only concern is going for the board of health going forward is that what's going to be huge next year with the board of health is the early childhood education. And I stand on one side of that issue, and you and Carolyn both stand on another side of an issue. So if we put both of you on board of health, then that kind of defeats this whole conversation, as far as board of health goes. But there are two seats, so there's a potential of another trade there. Personally, so if you were to look at, let's see it here quickly. Like, because Carolyn's on solid waste, if you were to take, leave her on solid waste, pull her from Health Department, and put her on one of your others, like your community action agency, I know you've been on that one, or maybe you could speak to that. Which one might be a good trade?
Commissioner Reddick?
I think Commissioner sort of made a motion, and I got sure it was seconded, to take each one of these separately. So rather than discuss one particular one at this point, I think we should vote on whether we're gonna discuss them all.
Right.
And I'd be happy to second.
Well, I think you're right, it's a division, any woman's man for division of the votes.
Right, I, so there's no need for a motion, it doesn't have to be, you know, a separate motion.
I didn't realize that that was a division of the question, I thought it was a...
Okay, okay.
But no, that's fine, and I appreciate that.
Okay, then...
I was planning on doing it, I was, so...
Okay, then I think this is all in order, or are we...
Okay. Commissioner answer.
In the case of the Health Board, I'm on the Board of Appeals, and I don't know if that, if I were to be assigned to the actual Health Board, whether that, you can sit on that one, too. Like, I don't think I can.
No.
So, you know, if that, there's a domino thing here, or it would make me not be on that in that assignment, on that other one. So, you know, I don't know how, you know, I don't know how you want to address this.
Well, we're just doing one at a time, I think we'll go through and take the time to do it. We'll just see, because I mean, you know, the first one is the nine one one advisory board. You know, and I'm on that one, I mean, I've been there three years. I'd like to stay there, but I mean, as, and no one has said they want to be on that one, so I didn't do anything with it. All right. We went to Bay Area Transportation. Commissioner Rushton has got the information about it, she's willing to sit, you know, and I don't know that anyone else wanted to be on it, so I didn't make any changes there. Do you want to vote on these, is that what you were asking for?
I think we're doing kind of a consensus vote, it sounds like, but we could go ahead and vote on it, might as well.
All right.
If we want to make it clear. Let's vote on it.
Okay, because then it kind of defeats the purpose of, then we're gonna do the appointments by commission other than by the chairman. You know, so it changes it.
I believe the word, chairman can appoint, anyone can object to it and ask for a vote. So there's no objections.
Changing rules.
I would say if there's no objections, the chairman announces his decision. If there's no objections, you move on to the next one. All right, is there one in agreement with that?
I think that's what our rules say.
It does, it does.
So, you know...
Actually, our rules say that the chairman appoints with the approval
Yes.
of the board of commissioners.
True.
Okay, points, we approve.
So, well, I, so do you want to do the vote, then, is that with the approval?
You know, unless there's a disagreement, let's just move on.
Exactly.
All right. Because it will be much more efficient, I think, you know, because we're not talking about every one of them. Commissioner Rushton?
Does any commissioner who hasn't approached the chair in regards to the board, has everybody had an opportunity to do that, to disclose the boards that they want to go on? If somebody wants to be on my beta board, you know, I'm okay with that. There's a learning curve, but you can pick that up pretty quick. It's the same thing with community corrections. I think it's a little bit more involved, but, I mean, if somebody's got a desire to be on a board, approach the chair.
And we did.
Okay, so...
Okay, so we're at the board of, the BLD HD Board of Health. So Melinda Laughtner's on that, and I didn't get any indication that that was, that she was willing to, wanted to get off of it, was willing to, so I left that the same.
Okay, well, I would, I do disagree with that appointment. I would like to see Tony become a member of the Health Board, and I would respectfully request to remain a member of the Health Board. And as far as the early childhood is concerned, the people have voted, and the Health Department has accepted, and we are now in the implementation phase, and because Commissioner Anzorgi was involved with the committee, I think he would be extremely helpful to implement the, implement the changes. And as he stated, he's been wanting to be on that board for the last several years. So I would like to stay on, and I'd like to stay on with Tony.
Commissioner Laughtner?
I disagree with that. I would like to stay on, and there is one more seat, so I wouldn't mind serving with Tony on the Health Board. I think that would be a balanced board. While it was passed, my district turned it down quite handily. So I think my district deserves to be represented also in make certain things followed through in a certain way. So as far as representation goes, I think that Tony and I could be a balanced board on the Health Department if you really want to make a change to the Health Department.
Commissioner Wessel?
I, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Tony Anzorgi and Peachy Redenbach as our two representatives for the Health Board.
Second.
So I would ask that those be divided, not do them together, do each one separate. So the, the first one would be for, yes?
Do we have to waive board policy because we are not following your recommendation? I'm asking the question.
No.
No, no, this is actually following it. There's an objection, you know, and so the board now votes on whether they approve my appointment or not. Basically, that's what we're voting on. And it's gonna be a replacement at the time, and if you were elected, then you would have to be removed from the Board of Appeals. You know, because you can't be on both. So this is on Tony Anzorgi in place of Commissioner Laughtner. Yes, Commissioner Reddick?
Is Tony willing to accept that position?
I asked him to be on it.
He's requested.
You've asked to be on that, okay.
Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, so the motion passes five to two. All right, so then the second was Commissioner Reddenbach being on the Health Board, was the second part of this motion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes four to three. So then that, then now we have the two on the Health Board. So then now we'll have to replace Tony at the Health, whatever the, the Health, Environmental Health Board is not, it's not that one, is it?
Board of Appeals.
He has, he can't be on that one no longer.
Right.
He can no longer be on that board, I should think.
Right, that's the next one. Okay, so, so is there anyone willing who wants to serve on that? Or I can take that one?
I can serve on it.
Okay, so Commissioner Laughtner would take over for that, okay. Any objections? No, all right, so then Commissioner Laughtner will be moved there. Then we have the Brown Hill redevelopment authority. Commissioner Sussel?
I'm willing to serve unless someone else wants to.
Okay. So we'll leave it there. Community Corrections, Commissioner Rushton?
There were no objections on that one, right?
Right, no objections. No objections on Community Corrections? How about Network to North? All right, can we go to Land Bank with Commissioner Sussel?
Willing to serve unless someone else wants to.
All right, so we'll leave that the same. Willamette County Family Coordinators? Commissioner?
Again, I've been on there five years, if anyone else would like to, I'm happy to step aside. They're willing to serve.
All right, then Northern Lakes, define that. Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency?
You know, if somebody wants it, I'm willing to step aside.
Okay, Northwestern Regional Air Force?
I would really appreciate if Deb would stay there at least through this year, because of the discussion we're having with the organizational structure. I would appreciate it if you would, you know, if we would keep you there, just because of that discussion.
I appreciate that. However, just like everybody else here, elections are in December. The elections may change the board at the end of next year, so I'm happy to serve on that board.
Okay, I mean, it's for this year anyway, next year it can all change again. All right, so then we're down to Park and Rec. Any changes there? Any objections to either one of those appointments? All right, the Planning Commission? Is that fine with Commissioner Laughtner?
Yes.
All right. Then the Solid Waste Council?
Yes.
Then Southern Subuse? I believe those are both the same. Commissioner Reddick?
Well, I would just like to compliment Commissioner Rushton and Commissioner Wessel for their service on that, particularly the leadership, I believe, of Commissioner Rushton. It's kind of excellent eye-opening experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so then that completes that, and do we want to do, do we want to do the standing committees? Yes.
Well, I don't know if it does, does complete that or not, because what I wanted to bring up was Willamette County Roder.
That's actually on the agenda for next Tuesday discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it's not part of the organizational, so that's why I brought it up Tuesday.
Okay, but I'd like to make it part of the organization. All right.
I think we need to have a thoroughly lengthy discussion on the future of that.
Okay, we'll discuss.
So if you look on the draft agenda for next week, it's on there. Anything else? Have we moved to standing committees? Are there any objections to any of these? No?
Good question, Kevin. It says I was on the Finance and Audit Committee, but I don't think we've met.
No, no. I can handle that. All right, thank you. All right, so then that brings us then to email documentation.
Yeah, just, I guess, that's some feedback. It's, you know, we email everything, but a lot of times we print everything off. We have a lot of paper, and I know it's just kind of, a lot of it I see leftover, and I'm just thinking, good to your opinion that. I'm thinking unless it's a late agenda item, that obviously if we send out Monday or Tuesday, you don't get it. But if we can have a understanding that everything's sent out during the packet and everything, we do not print out.
Commissioner answer.
I do appreciate having the agenda.
Yeah, with agendas, we always will. But I'm thinking a lot of times we print out contracts and everything else. I notice a lot of times when I leave, it's either in the basket or left up here, and we do email everything out. And I know sometimes it's last minute things that come out, you have a chance to read out, but I'm thinking informally a rule of thumb is if it's sent out prior to meeting the week before that, we don't print it out.
Commissioner Reddick?
I'm all in favor of that, however, in a case like today where I didn't even know that I didn't receive the packet, I received the agenda, and I was just working off of the, you know...
You should always assume that you're gonna get a packet beforehand.
Okay, well...
I'm just saying, I know even though...
Instead of criticizing each other...
Well, I'm not criticizing you, I'm just saying.
I would just like to make the request that the clerk have two printed copies of the packet available at the meetings, in case someone wants to refer to it in writing, or in case that there's, you know, value of translation.
And we always have a copy, I always have a copy, I think you do actually, we actually do have extra copies. But if you could just assume everything's in email form, if you don't get something, if you don't get a packet, let us know. It should be going through, I'm not sure why you, why you're the one that didn't get a packet. I don't, we do send them out. So if you don't get it, ask why. I'm just trying to save paper, we do waste a lot of paper.
Yeah. Commissioner Wessel?
Well, the Community Mental Health Board has a lot of, a lot of handouts, and those are downloaded automatically to a file on our laptop, so we skip the email page. So I can just go to my folder on my iPad, and everything that Laurel has sent is already there in chronological order. And it would be handy to do that if Ron could figure out how to do that.
Yeah, okay, I think, yeah, yeah, Dropbox would work. All right, less work come in.
That's a great suggestion.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I have so much clutter in mine.
Well, the problem with emails, you get a lot of them, and then you gotta look for the right one.
And then delete this one, go to that one, and I can't.
Yeah, but you're right, if we could do Dropbox, and we'll get that on your iPads, and we'll have a lesson how to do that, but that would be helpful, that way you'd have one icon to go to, you know it would be there.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Any other comments about emails?
Can we take a break?
Yes, let's take a five-minute break. Yes, let's take a five-minute break.
I'm getting to help.
You're welcome.
I'll take a break. Sure. I can't, I can't charge my, I just like doing all my, I need some.
Yeah, I'm good.
Dropbox would allow us to do that.
So we're on the 2020 goals?
Yeah, I believe so. Well, we have done this in the past, the last couple of years at least.
Each of you have emailed me your ideas and thoughts and I compile them just a major list and then we keep whittling it out.
I must agree with that.
Seems to have worked. That way I will compile any emails, any goals, suggestions that you have, send them to me. I'll compile the complete list of everyone's ideas and then distribute to use together for their dialogue.
It will shorten the conversation a little.
Yeah. At least at the beginning. So if you could email them to me by next week, I can compile them for next week's meeting. The last time it usually takes us a couple of months to finalize them.
Yeah, do we have it on the agenda?
I can add it to it.
Yeah, we should have to add that to the agenda.
Okay.
Which is tiny.
That's why it's only a draft. And it really has not, not even been set out.
Right.
So if you'd like to do that, if you could email your goal ideas for 2020.
Any other suggestions? Commissioner.
I have, I do have a request for the opioid coalition, you know. I, you know, I need to have a good idea, a better idea of where we're going to go with that. You know, when we started out, we were looking at, you know, maybe going for grants and all that kind of stuff. And I'd kind of like an update, you know, I still want that goal out there, but you know, maybe give me some direction of where we're headed. I, I would appreciate that.
Um, yes.
And I want to do it right this second.
No, I know, but there are some things that we're working on and I have to thank Eric and Leland Enterprise for stepping up this year and assisting us with some of the media out there that we need. So thank you very much, Eric. But there are, we're working on that program for this year and it takes a little time to get that done, as you know. But yeah, I'll be happy to report on that, Chat. Do you have anything?
No, actually, your timing is perfect because at the last meeting in December, we talked about, we've been doing this for several years. We've done more of a direct approach, mostly to our students and so forth. We want to do a broader approach to the community. We have some ideas. We did meet with the publisher of the enterprise right before Christmas and he was very supportive. And so, yes, you'll be hearing, not a change, but a more focused approach and specifically for 2020 as compared to the past couple of years.
Well, you know, you're, I see more and more outside, you know, other areas focusing on this and, you know, like I said, you know, you're just psychic, you know, we were way ahead of the curve.
Yes, we are.
And a lot of the things that these people are talking about are things that you guys are already doing, you know.
Yes.
So I, you know, I'm so impressed with how you guys have done this and, you know, I want it to continue, but I, you know, give me a little hint about where we're headed.
No, you're, you're right on target there. And we're going to meet again and we're going to have some announcements, hopefully a partnership with the Leland Enterprise, with some other media outlets to educate the general public more than just a specific groups. So it's great that we work with all the schools and students and everything, but there's a lot of people that are looking for information, don't know where to turn.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to fill that void also.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner.
We had a Networks Northwest Executive Committee meeting last night and Jason Allen joined us. And Jason handed out for the 10 county region, how much, how many dollars are going into various counties for rural development projects. And we're last. And that may be, I mean, there may be lots of reasons for it, but as we think about goals, I think we need to consider how we might qualify for more grant, grant opportunities to, to help our county. We also distributed something that I just want to take a second to, to share because it's related to.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do, do they ever tell you how many dollars go out to the state of Michigan from counties?
No. This, Networks Northwest just published this, in fact, they haven't distributed it yet, but for each of the counties in the region, there, there are some demographics. And I think it's, obviously Leland County looks good. If you look at, in the, and I'll leave this with Chat, but all the counties are, are listed and, and we got to feel good about it, but as I, there's a couple of things that stick out for me. Obviously, the older generation, the proportion of people in the, in the, in the older age group. But on the backside, one out of three of our population are Alice families, meaning they're working but don't have enough money to live in this county for housing, for healthcare, for childcare. And I don't know that we can do anything about it, but that's a significant number of, of families. One out of three are Alice. We sometimes talk about the number of families in poverty, but some of those people are choosing to be in poverty maybe, or at least not struggling and working hard. But the Alice families are families that are full-time employed that at the end of the month, they don't have enough money to pay for the cost of housing and the cost of transportation and the cost of heat. And I think we need to see if there's something we can do to impact that. Some of it's zoning, some of it's housing stuff, but one out of three families, Alice, is, I think, a challenge that we ought to see if we might do something about. So when we think about goals, I just like us to look at this, this data and see if there's something we might, we can't fix everything, but I think we might be able to address Alice in some ways.
Well, we just did address it with the new election in November. We just took a dollar seventy-five a week out of that paycheck, taxes for children.
Four percent.
You know, that was one address.
Four percent of our population. Yep.
So gave a little less money.
Not, not if they, there are populations that qualify that, that would not have, the millage would not.
Well, if they live here, you know, it's going to be property tax.
Not everybody does pay the millage. There's poverty reduction. Those folks escape the millage and people that are renting escape the millage unless people.
No, they don't.
Unless people who own the rentals decide to pass it on to them.
Exactly.
Exactly. Which is an interesting thing, but.
Well, why really interesting?
Well, I don't want to revisit the Earl of Chubb.
No, I don't.
I wanted to say that.
My, we did three families, is what I'm saying.
One out of three families are being challenged to, to live here and if there's something we can do about it, we ought to try.
Okay. Careful use that early village to help them, the early childhood. Commissioner Wessel.
Um, I just would like to say, you know, we throw these things out there like we have all the information we need in regards to a certain segment of society that has been defined in a certain way. But we do not have the statistics about the availability of services to these people in our community. So if we're going to look at providing, I think first, we need to look at the whole picture. Leland Christian neighbors, churches, what are they doing? Schools, what are they doing? Before we start throwing money at another project. And I also think that we need to remember, everybody has a right, they have free will. They make their choices. They choose to go to school or not go to school. They choose to work in the job they're in or get a different job. They choose to have kids or not have kids. That burden does not necessarily fall on us as commissioners, not necessarily us, but other taxpayers. In my neighborhood in Point, we have several old people, myself included, and we look after one another. If somebody is sick, we bring a dish, whatever. We have a young veteran in our neighborhood, he's, he's got PTSD or whatever you call it, you know, and we as a neighborhood show the respect. You get the picture what I'm trying to paint. We need to be neighbors first before we start, start spending everybody's limited tax dollars on one group.
Commissioner Sussel.
I was one, going to make a suggestion for Networks Northwest when they're grouping data. Most of the early childhood data is zero to six and there, they have theirs grouped zero to, or zero to four, really. So it would be helpful, I think, because the services that come along are all grouped zero to six primarily. And I, you know, to, to add to Commissioner Rushton's comments, I agree, we do need to know what's available. I mean, that's why when we started the early childhood, there were representatives on that committee from every single group, not to revisit it, but they represented the churches. They were for LCN, they were for all, and that was the reason. We needed to know upfront what were the services and how much money was being spent out there, where were they, who was being served, who was not being served, et cetera. So I couldn't agree with you more. And I think the other thing that's amazing about this county, it always has amazed me, is how generous people are with supporting one another. And I know in our neighborhood, it's the same as yours, Commissioner Rushton, we, we have people, when they're ill, people bring in dinners and this kind of thing. And I think that's a wonderful part of living here in Leland County.
Commissioner Wessel, I want to be real clear to Commissioner Rushton, nobody's talking about throwing money at anything. I'm presenting some data and saying I'd like to, we would consider our goals to talk about if there's some way that we might make life easier for one out of three of our families. And some of that has nothing to do with county commission business, but some of it does have. We have, in this state of Michigan, we have the biggest mismatch between median income and median cost of housing. Some of that is due to our own regulations. We can explore our services, we can promote charity, but let's also see if there's some role we might play. Some of that rural America money goes to families that need it, but we're not getting it. So I'm not talking about throwing money.
If I may ask.
Commissioner Rittenbach had her hand up.
I have a question in regards to his comment.
Commissioner Rittenbach.
I'll defer to Deborah.
Okay.
Townships, do they have the same advantage to take advantage of this program?
The rural America.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, they do. I contacted Doug Strips last night about our sewer issue.
Okay. And thank you, Carolyn, I appreciate that.
I, I just was going to question whether we're putting the cart before the horse with all these discussions because we're supposed to turn them into chat and then have that discussion later.
Fifth point.
And I was thinking, am I lost on the agenda? Are we already in Commissioner comments? Or are we co-issues? Did we skip public comment? So I, I was just going to suggest that we discuss this after we submit our, our suggestions.
Commissioner.
Um, all this discussion has, has brought me to a point where I think I have to speak on goals. And this is my objection with goals. I, I, I am opposed to goals. I said it before, I don't like us setting goals because all goals do is create more regulation and more taxation on people. If we are just going to come up here and do the business of the county, that's what we're elected to do. But you throw something so innocent out there as a, as a, a little goal to explore something and the next thing you know, as, as Will said, now we're, we're taxing our residents even more. And as I said, my district, my district voted it down and yet now they are paying heavily for a new, a whole new program in the county for, as it says, four percent of our population. And that just bothers me greatly. So if I, we could vote on this and have no goals, that would be what I would prefer. Our goal, just do the business of the county.
Commissioner.
Let's go ahead and set goals. I, I think it's a good thing that we have goals, that this is some of the area, you know, there's going to be things come up that we have to address and we understand that and we'll address them as they come up. But some things we can see and say, this is something we should at least look at. And in some cases, guess what? The people get to decide, not us. The people get to decide. And that's what happened with early childhood development. The people voted. They had the choice.
Yeah, your district turned it down too.
Not us.
That's correct.
So.
Overall.
So if you don't like our form of representative government, change it.
That is what I said.
But that's, that's what, that is, that is, that is the rules that we operate under. And that's what we, we all, that's the constitution that we all took the oath to uphold. So if there's something that, you know, really bothers you, change, you know, work to change that. And, you know, there's mechanisms to do that. But I don't have a problem letting the people choose when they want to be able to choose. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would like to address that. We have seventeen percent of the people voted for this, of the voters. We put it on a hundred percent of the people. I, if you wanted the people to vote, why did you put it at a hidden election on November instead of putting it on popular? Because it doesn't get even put on the tax roll till December next year. So, so to say you let the people vote, it's just the opposite. You hid it from them because every person I talked to didn't even know anything about it. So, so you can say that, but it's seventeen percent of the people did it. Commissioner.
Well, he's absolutely right. And, and for us just earlier to say, yeah, we've got rules, but if we can sneak something through such as that election and, and it's not caught at that very moment, then that's okay because that's what I heard today. That was like, well, oh, should have caught at the time, it snuck through that way. It should have gone to executive. We ask for all those, it's, you know, more time on that. And I agree a hundred percent, it should have been on the tax rolls this fall because I have had a lot of, of feedback on, on that election and there's a lot of people that are very unhappy with it. And there was a lot of, of, well, not only misinformation, but a lot of information not even known, I will say. So I, I would just have to agree with that comment. And then, like I said, that just, the business of the county first and, and not additional goals for us to take on.
Commissioner.
Um, what part of the agenda are we on now?
Goals.
Well.
Goals are not goals.
Okay, I, I feel that we had, I thought we had come to a consensus that we were all going to present them to Chat. And if a personal commissioner or an individual commissioner wants to say, we prefer not to have goals, then I think that, you know, that should be honored. But I think we should move along, is what I'm saying.
I disagree. I think this has been a healthy discussion and I don't know why Peachy wanted to cut it short, but I would remind us all that if the goal is to have no goals, that's still a goal.
All right. Don't want to waste our time.
Did you want to answer that?
I, I, I just, I don't want to spend the rest of the morning talking about why, why not, how we should honor the vote that has been taken in a public election.
So then I would say that brings us to the public comment. Please.
Now it's your turn.
I guess I've heard my, Guanalgaire, Cleveland, I guess I've heard my whole life that it's important to have.
important to have a direction, a goal, that we achieve more. So it's a really interesting comment, not a concept, not to have any goals. That's, gosh, I hope you don't go, go there. I was also raised, and I think most of us were, not all of us, to value and care for the least among us. I also learned in economics that with capitalism, five percent of the population will be under, unemployed. That's just part of capitalism. But I hope that our overriding concern in life is that we must care for the least among us. And if we are all healthier, we are all, it is better for all of us. That's not well said, but you know what I mean. I had been really concerned the last couple of meetings at a sentiment that our public vote, which, oh, by, by the way, since it was in November, which is, which is when people vote as a rule, that's not hidden. It is our job as citizens to be informed, and a November election is not a hidden election. I'm sorry you feel that way. But I have been genuinely concerned at a tone that I was hearing that a commissioner can intercede and override the vote of the public. That's really deeply, deeply concerning to me. Six out of the seven townships with, with the most children voted for this. If a buck seventy-five comes out of our paycheck, those people get much more of that back in value, and the future of our county is enriched. And we pay very, far fewer taxes in the future for jails, for truancy, for all kinds of things. We are investing a tiny bit of money in our future and in the future of this county, and I care about the future of this county. It's a pretty wonderful place to be. So the vote of the people was that we invest in ourselves and that we care about all of us. This is money that's available to everyone. So the deep concern I still have that this commission would try to override the will of the people. That's big. That's really big. The people have spoken. Please listen to us.
Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
While you guys are setting your goals, I want to thank you for your continued support with Land Bank and its operations. I think it's an underutilized tool, along with Brownfield, and I want to remind you guys that on January twenty-first at eleven AM, we're bringing in some state experts that is going to better help explain what tools are available to us already. And for this body to better understand that and to better utilize it, it's not using taxpayer dollars, it's just using what we have and the funds that are already available to us to maybe help some of the commissioner goals as far as housing or affordability and so on and so forth. So just again, thank you for your support in what we're currently doing, and I encourage you to come the eleventh, or excuse me, the twenty-first at eleven AM to learn more about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Can I add one second?
You have your chance.
Can only do it once?
Yes. Is there any other, is there any other, now I just know the commissioner comments.
I have one.
Yes.
My New Year's resolution is to have more conversations about environment, about families, about kids, and about service. And I don't want us to cut short those conversations. I want us to be efficient about it, but I think they're healthy, and I would urge that we get all of our opinions on the table and look at more data and not less data. So that's my New Year's resolution, and I hope you'll support that.
Commissioner.
I just wanted to make two comments, one about the Land Bank. I went to the dedication of the house in Maple City and signed one of the rafters, and it was, it was really moving for the family, and it was wonderful partnership with Habitat for Humanity, and I compliment you on the ability of the Land Bank to partner with nonprofits and perhaps, you know, in the future, other public, you know, the state or something to, to further those goals. The other thing is, is that we had a meeting with a handful of us about new construction going on in Empire, and I was down to Empire yesterday and saw that three new homes had been built in that project that, that we met about. I don't know if the rest of you, there was a Realtor that wanted to develop a parcel kind of behind the National Park headquarters and the other side of 122 that backs up to the Crystal Health Clinic or whatever, Crystalway Health Clinic. And there's a big property in there, and they are starting development, so it's really positive to see workforce housing going in.
What price range are those homes that are going in there?
I think that, he said, one hundred and thirty-nine?
Uh.
Was the?
Two thirty-nine, maybe?
No, two hundred and, I think the cheapest, help me out, Patricia. The cheapest was two hundred and forty, maybe, two thirty-nine.
Two forty in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So not one forty, two forty?
But they are talking about including potentially a home that would be affordable within the other collection of homes that are not so affordable.
I think the one thing that concerns me is when we talk about affordable, it's relative. It's, it's relative. And to truly get affordable housing here, we need apartments. And I know, in reading the newspapers and listening to the people, most people don't want apartment buildings in their communities. It's going to be an uphill battle all the way. But when you look at new homes, and we can tout about all the homes that are being built, there's homes in my, every one of our districts, there's homes everywhere being built. Cost of the land is too high for affordability to start with, and then you add on the inflated construction costs. Today, we went through that last year with the inflated cost because of demand, and housing affordability just really isn't there in Lelandon County, unless you have something where maybe under the Rural Development Program, you can go in and put up apartment buildings, three, four-bedroom apartment sizes, like they do with the elderly down there in Elmwood. They got a great apartment complex for the elderly. It's, takes up very little space. There's a lot of advantages to that, but to go out there and talk about affordable housing, plunk a little here and plunk a little there, it's not going to work. So we got to be realistic about that. That's all I'm going to say.
Commissioner.
I think one of the points that Mr. Gallagher was making is there are tools we're learning that are available, and I really encourage all of us, you know, I mean, those of us on Land Bank will be there, but encourage all of you to attend that meeting on the twenty-first, because I think you'll be surprised at some of the successful ventures that have been tried out there and that we need to look at here in this county.
Commissioner.
I, I thought I hit the floor before, that's why. Again, you know, I commend you, John, for the work that Land Bank has been doing, and to go back to what Patricia said, encourage everyone, you know, to attend that meeting because it will be important. And, you know, I certainly understand other comments about the difficulty of it, but I think it is possible, and we need to encourage it, so.
Commissioner.
Well, John has been a part of our group in, in Northport, the Reach Group, and those are being constructed. I'm going to send you pictures, Chad, for your, for your proclamation section next week. But those are selling at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Which is reasonable.
And that's with no, no state or federal money in the, in the program. So we're thinking that that might be a model, very small lots, more than one home on a lot, that the community is excited about.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been reading about upzoning, and that's where allowing more property that, you know, doesn't, seven, two acres, you can get it out of an acre or something, you know. So there are, there are needs to do it. But it's still expensive here in Lelandon County. If you look at that average price in Lelandon County, those really aren't affordable, two hundred forty-eight thousand. Any other comments?
Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Should we put a?
Yeah, let's, let's go back.